Interesting on visitors to be heard, we do have Police Department Awards for 2020. And Matt?
Yes, thank you for seeing us this evening. We every year try to do our awards annually at this time of year. And so we have several awards to give out. I will start with the Officer of the Year, which is an award that is put out for nominations throughout the department as to who exemplifies our core values of fairness, integrity, service, respect, and teamwork. And after the nominations, everybody votes. And this year, Robin Howard was selected as the Officer of the Year for 2020. Now, hold on, Robin. Before Robin was selected for Officer of the Year 2020, his supervisor came to me and wanted to put him forward for a Community Service Award. Robin's been with the department for a long time. In 2007, he started pushing a program that we still do to this day, 14 years. It's a blood draw where the police and the fire department compete. And Robin has been the driving force behind this. It's a friendly competition each year. The numbers that were given to me is over 1,200 units of blood have been raised in that time. And Robin keeps threatening to retire here someday. So we wanted to make sure he got this award before he made that rash decision. So he has been awarded the Community Service Award for the blood draw, the heroes behind the badge that has been going on for 14 years now. And Robin has been the driving force behind that. So I wanted to recognize him for that. The next award is our Core Values Award. We call it our first award. And when I put out a request for nominations for Core Values Award in early November to the managers, basically, I got, no one could pick anybody. I think one of the managers said it best in that it's 2020, and with COVID and everything, everybody's done such a good job, it's hard to pick a single group. But on November 30th, on a Monday morning, early in the morning, at about 3:00 a.m., and I don't know if anybody that's worked graveyards knows, at 3:00 a.m. on a Monday morning, nothing is going on. And it's hard to believe that people are out doing what they're supposed to be doing when nothing is going on. But our officers were. Mark Foley and Evan Rowland. Sergeant Nielsen is also part of this group that did this action. And what happened was is that they were out doing parking enforcement and building checks. And fortunately, they were paying attention to their environment and out doing this and on Main Street. They found a two-year-old in the back of a car that had already been frozen over early in the morning. Temperatures were in the teens. The two-year-old had been there for an unknown amount of time. But the car itself was iced over on the hood. They forced entry into the car, got medical services there, got social services there, and then did a thorough investigation. And the responsible party charges were referred up to the state's attorney for that. That graveyard shift, which could easily have done nothing, instead was out there doing their job, things that are often unpopular, and it probably likely saved that two-year-old. So Mark Foley, who was the person that actually found the child, and Evan, who worked with Mark to force entry into the car, and they did a huge part of the follow-up investigation, and Sergeant Nielsen, who's not here today because he already had pre-planned vacation and was at a family event today, accomplished that, and I selected them for the first award. And finally, but not least, last but not least, we have a School of Resource Officer off the call, been the School of Resource Officer now for four years, four, five years, something like that. And the superintendent approached the School of Resource Officer group for the state of South Dakota. And I'll let him say a few words because he made the nomination. And at the end of the day, I got notified in November that John Cole was selected as the 2020 Officer of the Year by the School Resource Officer Association for South Dakota.
Well, first, on behalf of myself and our entire team at the Vermillion School District, I wanted to thank all of the officers because it's quite outstanding, your true heroes for the work that you do each day. But more importantly, just to say a few things about John. Officer Cole's been a vital part of our team at the school district. And again, thank you to the city for providing that resource for our district. We certainly appreciate that, whether it's helping with Special Olympics, or the polar plunge, or doing threat assessment safety at our school, reviewing video home visits. There's multiple things that we ask Officer Cole to do, and he's always glad to do it. He builds relationships with our kids. He keeps our families and our schools safe. And we're proud of him, and we're proud that he earned this award. So thank you.
Again, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much, Matt, and thanks to all of the officers that were honored today. We're very lucky to have you in our community and looking out for us. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
No, there is not.
All right. We will move on to public hearings. Item 6A, Transfer of Retail On/Off Sale Malt Beverage License with South Dakota Farm Wine from Imart Stores LLC to IYS Venture LLC for Imart Store at 830 East Cherry. Is that a Mike?
Yes, as was stated, an application was received for the transfer of the on/off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine license from Imart Stores LLC to IYS Ventures LLC for the Imart Store at 830 East Cherry Street. The notice of hearing and police chief's report are included in the packet. This malt beverage license with South Dakota Farm Wine is for the licensing period that expired June 30th, 2021. The City Council has the ability to transfer a license on two criteria, suitable applicant and suitable location. As to the suitable applicant, the corporate officers of IYS Ventures LLC and Imart Stores LLC are the same. There's one officer, Reesick Mufok. When the license was issued to Imart Stores LLC in June 2019, a background check was done at that time, and the police chief's memo stated there was no information to preclude the transfer of the license. The police chief's memo states now they've had no contact since the time of the transfer with the new owner with respect to the location criteria. An on-off sale malt beverage license with South Dakota Farm Wine has been issued to this location for many years. The transfer fee is $150, of which 75 is retained by the city and 75 is provided to the South Dakota Department of Revenue. Administration would recommend approval of the transfer of the on-off sale malt beverage license with South Dakota Farm Wine unless input from the public hearing provides additional information.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item?
No, there is not.
Turning it to the council.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey? Genowine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item of business is old business review of emergency resolution encouraging use of face coverings or face masks and determine continuation of the emergency resolution. John?
Thank you. The current emergency resolution was adopted at your last meeting on December 7th. It became effective on December 10th and runs until February 7th of next year. There are no changes to this emergency resolution. It's very similar to previous emergency resolutions that the City Council reviewed. As noted, the resolution encourages the use of face coverings in buildings that are open to the public. The staff has not received any comments or questions since this revised resolution was adopted or implemented. Again, I think the community has become very familiar with how the process works. I would note that we learned today that the governor signed Executive Order 2020-34 in that she extended the state of emergency until June 30th of 2021. So we have one of these come forward in the future. We'll need to change that background information as we had cited her previous emergency, excuse me, her previous executive order 2020-26. So while that executive order does expire, she has, the governor has continued that into the next year, as well as this resolution going to the next year. We do not have any comments or questions or suggestions offered.
Thank you, John. Is there any input from the public on this item?
No, there's none at all.
Turning it to the council. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, Review of Emergency Ordinance 1425 to require signage of the entrance to buildings open to the public that states face masks expected per city resolution. And John?
Thank you. Emergency Ordinance 1425 was adopted at your last meeting. It just became effective last Friday, December 18th. This has been kind of an ongoing thing where this is the third version or iteration of this. Just a reminder that the ordinance requires the post-it sign that reads face mask or expected per city resolution. Again, we do have those available at City Hall, the Chamber of Commerce Office, or you can download them from the city's website, or you can make your own that would utilize similar language. With all of our emergency ordinances or resolutions, so with this last item or this current one, we have it set up that each time the City Council meets, you would review to see if there are any changes or suggestions to be made to those documents. We have not received at City Hall any comments on ordinance 1425 or the previous version that have both been in effect at different times since your last meeting on December 7th. I would note that there have been no citations issued in the history of any of the three emergency ordinances related to this subject matter.
Thank you, John. Is there any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll turn it to the council. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next order of business. This is kind of our generic COVID-19 issues spot. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to bring up anything to do with COVID?
No, there's none at all.
Counsel?
I have a question, I guess, Kelsey.
Go ahead, Steve.
Have you heard about distributions of the vaccine in town at all, or John?
I can turn to John on this. I know that we were on a call with some of the, with the municipal league and the other mayors. There is sort of a schedule as to who is first in line, including first responders and law enforcement. And I know that...
So I guess...
It has started with Sanford. Go ahead, John, and then...
No, I don't have too much to add to that, Mayor. We're going to start with some of the healthcare employees here in our community and then the residents or at the care center, nursing home assisted living, I think were the next category. In my last conversation with Tim Tracy, they had talked about some of that would be starting this week, probably predominantly the healthcare workers. And then they hope before the end of this calendar year to have the nursing home assisted living residents as the next group. Beyond that, he did not, at that time, have too many specifics about when additional doses would be coming to the community to work through 1A, 1B, 1C, et cetera, as the vaccination plan has listed.
I do know that the pod has been meeting the point of distribution group to talk about kind of the details of how that might go out. Rich, did you have something to add? You're muted.
Yeah, I know. I just had to find the switch. Anyway, yes, I can vouch that Sanford has started. I talked to one of the RNs there today, and they are starting with it. And like everybody else, they have no idea when the general public will be. The general feeling is March to April time zone, but that's not official at all. But they have started at Sanford, and they also, Sanford both here and Sioux Falls.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you all.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, Second Reading of Ordinance 1426, the 2020 Supplemental Budget Appropriations Ordinance. And Mike?
The City Council adopted the revised budget for 2020 as part of the budget process in September of 2020. Since that time, some expenses have taken place, as well as changes in revenues resulting in a need to revise the budget. State statute provides for the City Council to adopt a supplemental budget to, budget funds for these expenditures. Part of the adjustments were made, or was reported to the City Council in November 16th noon meeting, were the allocations of funds received in the General Fund for reimbursement of the CARES Act expenditures. I've included a memo that has gone through, listed the individual line item changes. If there's questions on them, I can go through and try to explain them. Nothing has changed since first reading of the ordinance. The General Fund Reserve will be decreased by 1,125,000, still leaving a projected addition to the General Fund Reserve of 351,000. I guess if there's questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I'd recommend adoption of second reading of the Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance Number 1426.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any comment from the public on this item?
No, there are not.
Turning it to the council.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Genowine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is Second Reading of Ordinance 1427, Amending the Rural Service District to Remove Platted Property. And Mike?
With the ordinance adopted in 1996, the City Council established an urban and rural service districts within the city. SDCL 34-36 provides the criteria for the rural service district, and I'm sorry, it's 3440. And the city of Vermillion, the property taxes for the rural service district property for the city levy are calculated at the average mill levy for the adjoining townships as this value is agricultural, as this property is agricultural in its use. Once the property is platted, it is to be removed and used for commercial uses. It is to be removed from the rural service district. Lot 2, Block 1, Madison Park Edition was platted earlier this year for the development into apartments. This amendment would remove the platted property from the rural service district listed by our ordinance in Appendix A. There's been no changes to ordinance 1427 since first reading. Administration would recommend adoption of second reading of the ordinance. There's a map included in the packet that shows the four-acre tract that was platted for apartment development, which are in the process of being built right now.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any comment from the public on this item?
No, there is not.
Turning it to the council.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Genowine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries. Turning to new business, our first item is First Reading of Ordinance 1428, Mending Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70, General Traffic and Parking Regulations, Section 70.072, as it pertains to intersection parking restrictions. Jose?
Thank you. The city's currently working with Stockwell Engineers and the Bid Number Two Board to complete the design of the downtown streetscape project. During the review of the plans proposed by Stockwell, the city was informed that on-street parking at certain locations should be removed in order to improve safety. These parking impacts have been presented to the public, discussed by the Bid Number Two Board members and the City Council. Currently, there are three different rules or guidelines that the city has to follow when dealing with locations of on-street parking. These are state statutes, city ordinance, and guidelines found on the MUTCD or the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Just for everybody's knowledge, I guess, the MUTCD is the adopted national standards for traffic control for all straits in the country, such as, and that has to be followed by the state and all the other entities, including the city. Regarding MUTCD, that document says that there should be no parking within intersections and no parking within 20 feet of a crosswalk. The state statutes, 32-30-6 and 32-30-6.1 specifically, say that no parking within 20 feet of a crosswalk and no parking within an intersection. And then you have the city ordinance, 70.072, which says that no parking within 25 feet of or in an intersection. The proposed changes that we are asking for the city ordinance are meant to provide consistency within the language and the measurements between all three documents governing parking that the city has to follow. For the most part, the proposed city ordinance and the state statutes are identical. The differences would be that the city would not allow parking between intersections if these intersections are 50 feet or less apart, and that no parking be allowed between locations where parking is prohibited if this distance is less than 20 feet. The first of these differences is due to the propensity of offset intersections within Vermillion, specifically in the downtown area. These types of intersections are generally more unsafe than typical T-intersections in our locations where increased accidents may occur. Removing parking from these locations would increase safety for all users. The other difference would allow staff to remove parking where vehicles should not park due to lack of space on the roadway, such as in residential areas between an intersection and a driveway. These changes would be applied in the downtown area to start with the streetscape project. This is being done to remove liability from the city since we are currently not meeting the state statutes or the city's ordinance. It should be noted that if the streetscape project were not to occur, the city should still remove the parking with a future project. The city would be enforcing the amended ordinance throughout the city based on the perceived increase of safety. For example, business areas such as the downtown Princeton Street, Dakota Street would be first following the residential areas. At this point, there's no cost for the city in the future. There would be the cost of enforcing and any sign placement. Administration recommends approval of the first reading of ordinance 1428.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any comment from the public on this item?
No, there is not.
Turning it to the council. Any comments or questions? Travis?
Just a comment. On the first page of the ordinance, I believe there's a typo. There should be a strike through on item number four. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. A strike through on the four in front of the eight.
Yep, there is. It's just that it lines up perfectly with the strike of the four.
Okay.
But yeah, no, thank you.
Catherine?
I just wanted to say for the public, we've had a lot of discussion about that. I know feedback about any loss of parking in the downtown area is a concern, a serious concern for the businesses. And I think there has been a perception that the downtown streetscape is the reason that there would be a loss of parking downtown. But as Jose stated, we have a responsibility to be in line with state and federal statutes about where our parking needs to be. So unfortunately, you know, it looks like it's coinciding with the streetscape, but it's really a unique situation. And it's, we're trying to handle it, handle both at the same time, I guess. And so just to let everybody know that we understand that it's an issue for the downtown businesses, and we're trying to follow the law.
Thank you, Catherine. Anything else from the council?
Move approval to first reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Genowine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Our next item is tree board appointment. We did have a tree board, not necessarily vacancy, but a term that was up. We had two really fantastic applicants for that one space. The council did choose to appoint the incumbent, Aaron Badke. But I really hope that the other applicant does apply again because I think he would be a tremendous asset to that board. But we've really appreciated the work that Aaron has done as well. So if I could get a motion to approve that.
Still moved.
Got a motion, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Genowine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is the always controversial Public Safety Center Board Appointment. And Mike, you can tell us about this board, which I believe has been the same and may have never met. Is that correct?
As far as we know, the board has never met. It was created when the Public Safety Center was built in 1988. Agreement provides Public Safety Center Board to resolve any issues or conflicts between the city and county for the use of the facility. Current members of the board are Bruce Plate, whose term is expiring the end of this year, Dave Teese, term expires in 2021, and Bob Fuller, whose term expires in 2022. Sheriff Howe and Police Chief Betson are recommending the reappointment of Bruce Plate for a term expiring in 2023.
been the same and may have never met. Is that correct?
As far as we know, the board has never met. It was created when the Public Safety Center was built in nineteen eighty-eight. Agreement provides Public Safety Center Board to resolve any issues or conflicts between the city and county for the use of the facility. Current members of the board are Bruce Plate, whose term is expiring the end of this year, Dave Teese, term expires in twenty twenty-one, and Bob Fuller, whose term expires in twenty twenty-two. Sheriff Howe and Police Chief Betson are recommending the reappointment of Bruce Plate for a term expiring in twenty twenty-three.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is commercial collector's licenses for twenty twenty-one. And Mike?
City ordinance requires approval by the City Council for issuance of a commercial collector's license. I provided ordinance sections that apply to that. We've received applications for renewal and for new licenses. Lauren Fisher Disposal Renewal, renewal for Fisher's Disposal LLC, renewal for Waste Connections, a renewal for VGS Inc. for Vermillion Garbage Service, renewal for Waste Management of Sioux City, and new license for Herm Sanitation Incorporated and for Ruze Sanitation LLC, a new license. Just a little information, new application for Herm Sanitation is a hauler that stated he's collecting rural Lincoln and Union County waste. The route is one day a week, collects about seven tons per week, or about thirty tons a month. He said he acquired this route from Lauren Fisher that was previously collected by Independence Waste. And he said with the closing of the Worthing Transfer Station, he's applying for a license to haul to the Joint Powers landfill. The new application for Ruze Sanitation LLC is the hauler for the city of Beersford starting January one, two thousand twenty-one. The city of Beersford bids out its solid waste collection, and this year they awarded the contract to Ruze Sanitation. The Beersford contract was previously held by Lauren Fisher Disposal. Included the police chief's report for the renewals. He indicates there's no incidents this year. The police chief would only cover local city code violations and was for the haulers previously licensed. The license requires the haulers to abide by all city ordinance as part of the application. The license fee is three hundred dollars. Administration would recommend the approval of the commercial collector's license for two thousand and twenty-one for the listed haulers.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
No, there's not at City Hall.
Turning it to the council. Rich?
If I remember correctly, I think this is the first year there's not been any issues with any of them. That's a great thing. I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad things are doing better. And I like to move approval of the selected haulers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is renewal of taxicab business license for Shuttle Express South Dakota LLC. Mike?
Noah Kleinsauser on behalf of Shuttle Express LLC has submitted his taxicab license renewal application for renewal of the business license that the City Council approved on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty. The city ordinance provides the governing body has the discretion to approve or disapprove a taxicab business license depending on the governing body deems applicant a suitable person to hold the license. Noah has submitted the renewal application, the taxicab inspection form, the rate schedule, and certificate of insurance that have been included in the packet. The police chief reported the department has had no contact with Noah Kleinsauser or Shuttle Express SD LLC. The business license renewal fee is twenty dollars for the first vehicle and ten dollars for each additional vehicle, and it will expire on December thirty-first for two thousand twenty-one. First, the city staff would recommend approval of the renewal of the license unless additional information is brought forward.
Is there anyone in the audience which is to?
No, there is not.
Okay. Turning it to the council. Any discussion?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I do have one quick question, Mike. So that ten dollar for the first vehicle, is that just the renewal? Was there more at the original registration?
Yes, it was twenty-five dollars at the original registration, and each renewal is twenty dollars.
Okay. One thing I will point out is that the operation of a taxicab business in Vermillion does require our public transit to severely limit some of the services that they're allowed to offer. Because of the federal funding they receive, they have to limit their availability if there's a private company that is in competition. And so, I think that might be something that we need to look at. If all it is is twenty-five dollars to maybe get some business, you know, it creates an opening that actually could put many of our folks that rely on public transit in a difficult position. And I would just say that maybe in the future, that's something we might want to explore a little bit further.
Elsie, can you elaborate on what the rules are for the public transit?
My understanding is that they can't do on-demand rides when there's a taxicab operation. So people, in order to be able to go to the grocery store, doctor's appointments, have to make appointments at least twenty-four hours in advance. My understanding is that they also have to limit their hours as far as like some evening and weekend availability. I think that's something that we could have Barb come and tell us a little, the director of public transit, maybe tell us a little bit more about in the future, because I do think that as much as I don't want to discourage private industry, this is a case where it is, it's so cheap to throw in, and the results may be so destructive, that I'm not sure that this is exactly what we would want to be doing if we had planned it out. Julia, did you have anything to add?
But?
I was just going to add that the safe rides are not covered on the same grant, if that's correct. So if people are worried about that.
Steve?
So, does our Uber license, our ability to have Uber in town affect the, our federal bus?
No, that was one of the things when we were originally going through that ordinance, that they were not classified as a transportation company because of, under the federal rules, I guess, but because they were an app, that they're a technology company. Does that sound right, John?
Yes, the transportation network company is a little bit different than the taxicab. And so there's kind of almost two sets of guidelines, if you will. And the mayor's correct, with the transportation network companies, your Uber or Lyft, they do not impact public transit the way a taxicab license does.
But under the scheme we have now, we have no reason to deny this license, and I wouldn't suggest that we would. I just, I just wanted to put that kind of on, you know, on the plate as something we might want to explore in the future.
Yeah, I, I'm troubled by this, especially because, not just because, but it is a Yankton company, and so it's not like it's in Vermillion, located in Vermillion. And I'm just wondering, you know, if there's a way we can get around the federal ruling or rules, or because it's not located here in Vermillion, but I understand it ostensibly operating in Vermillion. So.
But maybe something we want to explore in the future, because I think our public transit is, is very important, and we as a city have invested in it fairly heavily.
Right.
So. All right, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is agreement with Clay County for combined June twenty twenty-one election. Mike?
State statute nine thirteen eleven provides if the governing body of a municipality chooses an election date other than the second Tuesday of April, the date of such election shall be established by January fourteenth of election years. As there were vacancies filled in the office of mayor and councilmember central ward, state statute dictates that the appointed members will serve until the next annual election. As such, an election date will need to be set for the city for two thousand and twenty-one. In talking with the county auditor, the county is considering an election on the courthouse issue in June. And in talking to the school business manager, they have two terms expiring on the school board. Due to terms expiring with the city, we'll have an opening for a one-year term of mayor and a three-year term as councilmember of the central ward. The city council by ordinance set an election date corresponding with the June primary, thus providing for combined elections to get better voter turnout. The cost of holding our own election, the last time we did that was in June of fifteen, which was over thirty-five hundred dollars. For two thousand twenty, the combined election with the primary was twenty-eight hundred, and the county auditor has proposed the same fee for two thousand twenty-one if we combine the election. We've noted a better voter turnout with having a combined election, residents not needing to go to the polls to vote at different times for city, county, and school. The school has already approved the combined election. The county will be approving it probably tomorrow, administration or next Tuesday. Administration would recommend the city council authorize the mayor to sign the combined election agreement for the June eighth, two thousand twenty-one municipal election to be combined with the county and the school election.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any comment from the public on this item?
None at City Hall.
Turning it to the council.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to bid openings, surplus vehicle and equipment. Jose?
Thank you. So all of the vehicles being sold through, were sold through sealed bids. Were either replaced during the two thousand nineteen year or the two thousand twenty budget year. There are quite a few. There's a table of them on the packet, along with the price value. Bid specifications were requested and sent to twenty-four potential bidders for the vehicles and equipment. Of these, the city received ten bids on December fifteenth. Even though there's a table on the packet, I am putting it here for the general public, I guess. Might be a little bit difficult to see, but essentially out of the ten bids that were...
Jose sliding down there. There we go.
So out of the ten bids that the city received, there were five bids that were good bids, meaning that the proposals were signed, we had appropriate bid security, and everything was kosher as far as the way that it was, the way that it arrived through the city. However, there were quite a few that were faulty. Either the proposals were not signed, they had incorrect proposal form, the bid was sub below the required ninety percent, they had the wrong type of bid security, or the bids were submitted late. Regardless, we did receive, all of the vehicles received a bid with exception of item G, which was two thousand twelve Freightliner. That vehicle, we're still going to be, that's actually the jet truck back. We're still going to be trying to sell that either through, through the municipal league magazine. We're going to market it through that. And then we're also going to try something new, which would be utilizing internet or it's a bidding service that's online, that's geared towards municipalities and public entities. No, sorry, the revenue from the sale of the surplus equipment will be placed in the equipment replacement fund with exception of item A. Item A would actually be going towards a landfill fund. Administration recommends awarding the sale of the two thousand seven and two thousand nine Ford F-250s to Mark Marine for total of ninety-seven hundred dollars, the two thousand seventeen Spartan SRT XT mower to Mr. Thad Manning for four hundred and one dollars, the nineteen ninety-seven Toro three forty-five mower to Mr. Will Mart for three hundred and sixty dollars, and the two thousand two, two thousand eight, and two thousand four Ford F-150s to Vermillion Ford for eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Council?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is the sale of surplus abandoned dumpsters. Jose?
Thank you. Two thousand nineteen, the city, Independence Waste, went out of business in the city. With this, when this occurred, they left quite a few dumpsters and residential bins throughout the community. In order to help the community get rid of these, the city allowed individuals and businesses to leave the empty containers at the landfill. Now that that's happened, and the creditors have claimed what they wanted, the city is trying to essentially dispose of the remaining property that wasn't claimed by anyone. With that, we do have quite a few dumpsters and a various sizes and a compactor. All of these were appraised by the city's surplus property committee. Bid specifications were sent to eight potential bidders. Out of these, the city actually received one bid. This bid was faulty since they were using the wrong type of bid form or bid security. The bid security that they proposed was a personal check. The city requires this to be either a cashier's check, certified check, or cash for at least ten percent of the bid amount. Um, after the bids were opened, uh, and read, the city received an inquiry on the possibility of submitting a bid on the dumpsters. Uh, since the city did not receive any responsive, responsible bids, it's permissible to submit a bid after the opening on items that are still for sale. Uh, since everything was for sale at that point, um, this, uh, individual, uh, Mr. Wade Larson, uh, submitted, uh, three bids on the six, uh, on the six two-yard dumpsters, the 19 three-yard dumpsters and the five five-yard dumpsters. Uh, the sale of these, uh, items, uh, would go to the landfill fund. With that being said, uh, administration recommends awarding, uh, the sale of all of these dumpsters as mentioned previously to Mr. Wade Larson for a total of $3,175.
Thank you, Jose. Turning it to the council.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
I think he's frozen.
I think he's frozen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Uh, moving on to our city managers' report, John?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the library is doing their annual library services survey and, uh, they're looking to get as many responses as they can before the end of this month, the end of this year. Uh, the survey is available on the library's website and I do believe there's some paper copies available at the library as well. Uh, with the upcoming holidays, just a reminder that city offices will close at noon this Thursday, December 24th, and offices will be closed on Friday, the 25th of December, as well as Friday, January 1st. Uh, individuals who have their curbside recycling collection that would typically take place on Friday, December 25th or Friday, January 1st, they will have their make-up curbside recycling collection on either Monday, December 28th or, or, and I should say not, or, they'll have both opportunities, Monday, December 28th as well as Monday, January 4th. For our participants in the Thursday route, um, this coming Thursday, December 24th, we do ask that they have their bins out to the curb by 7:30. We're going to kind of, um, divide up the crews and try to have them make a quicker pass so that they can also, um, be done with work at noon on the 24th. So this Thursday, if you're on curbside recycling, please have your bins out by 7:30. Uh, with that, the Christmas tree collection site did open today and they do accept, uh, real Christmas trees. The site is in its same location, which is on Broadway, south side of Broadway Street, approximately, uh, block and a half west of Dakota Street. Um, please remove any plastic that you might wrap your tree in for transporting as well as lights and decorations. We'll keep this Christmas tree, uh, live collection, live Christmas tree collection site open, uh, through Friday, January 15th of 2021. And included in your packet, packet was one raffle notification. USD physical therapy program, uh, submitted that raffle notification. They'll be selling tickets from January 18th through March 15th of next year. Tickets are $6 for one ticket or $20 for four tickets. The proceeds from this raffle will be used to fund a pro, or course that physical therapy students use to prepare for the PT, uh, board exam. And the prize, uh, with the raffle is a whole hog butchered and processed, they'll be, uh, approximate value of around $200. That's all that I have, mayor?
Thank you, John. Any questions for our city manager? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to invoices payable and do we have any questions for Mike? When do we pay our bills?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay our bills. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no consensus agenda tonight.
That's a bummer.
Well.
I better move to adjourn then.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Letler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye, and I wish everybody a nice Christmas and a happy new year.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye, and I agree with Howard. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have wonderful holidays and we'll see you next year.